The city of the Tachit City Council meeting for most extinguisher. As you all rise to the. It's America. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in two republics, the richest fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City clerk class, would you please call roll?
The more, David Shields.
Here.
Wager.
Here.
Walker, present, Murphy.
Present. Actually, all fired here today. Next is to hear a presentation by representatives of Dennis, Garfunkel, Nigbert, Dar, Travis City concerning our financial statements and a report of independent certified. Public accountants of the annual audit of the city's finance for the year ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty one. I turn it over to city manager Terry, right?
Sure, I'm a gentleman, Jake Schirbach, who's here from both sides, and I'm here guys to make the presentation.
There you go. City of the Tachit. Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. I'm trying to share my screen, but it looks like it's disabled right now. So if I could do that on top of the financial statements.
And this is Trina. I'm here as well, but it says the host has turned my video off.
So, man. I'm the Tachit guy, I'm here as well. See her up there.
All right, it looks like I'm sharing my screen now, so you can see that okay, right?
See it, correct.
Okay, great. So, yeah, um, my name is Jake Skierback, so I will walk us through the financial statements for twenty twenty one audit at a pretty high level. Um, keep things fairly brief. So if you have questions as I'm moving through the statements, please feel free to stop me, otherwise I'll just keep on moving along. And with that being said, I will kind of start by looking at the management's discussion and analysis page. So that's towards the beginning of the whole financial saving packet. Uh, I say this each year, so there's sixty seven pages in this packet, and if you don't want to read all of them, um, I would recommend that you at least. Read the management's discussion and analysis. It gives a great summary of everything, uh, and it also gives a comparison to the twenty twenty fiscal year, whereas. The regular financial statements are just presenting the twenty twenty one fiscal year. So moving on from there, I will jump into the auditor's report. So if you happen to compare this report to last year's report. You'll notice that this is a little bit different, uh, affected with the twenty twenty one fiscal year. The order of this report changed a little bit. Um, the opinion is now first and. The substance is effectively the same. There's a little bit more information included, but, uh, again, the opinion is the first paragraph that we have in this report now. So we kind of got right to the point. Uh, in our opinion, these financial statements that you will see shortly are presented fairly. Uh, and we believe that they are materially correct. So that means that the opinion is unmodified or clean. And that is the highest level of assurance that we can offer as auditors. And now from there, it kind of lays out that management's responsibilities after we state that opinion. So management's responsibility is to prepare these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. In the United States of America. And then after we give you our opinion in that first paragraph, I'll see that our responsibility is to express an opinion, uh, which we just laid out. And then it kind of gives you more detail as to what we do throughout the audit. So if you care to read more about that, it's listed below, um, that section. But now I will move into some of the numbers for the year. Again, this is as of December thirty first of twenty twenty one. I'll start with the state statement of financial position or sorry, statement of net position. So this is a full accrual statement, and you can see that I've added notations here. There's a lot of columns. The first three columns are for the primary governments, the third being a total between governmental and business type. So what that means is, uh, that information is all of the funds except for the component units, which are the Tifa library in downtown management parking. So I'll focus on the primary government for purposes of this presentation. So again, we're going to be focusing on this total column. And I'll just point out a few of the larger classes of assets. See, at the top, cash and cash equivalents plus investments represent twenty nine percent. Of the total assets and deferred outflows of resource resources for the city's primary government at your ends. And then the largest category by far is the capital assets net of accumulated depreciation. So that. Category represents sixty two percent of total assets and deferred outflows at your end. So to keep that in, um, perspective. That's your buildings, land, equipment, uh, water and sewer system, uh, as things like that that aren't necessarily liquid. As cash and investments are. And then the other large group that's within the non-current asset section along with capital assets. Is restricted cash and investments for specific purposes. So that's three point five percent of. Um, the total assets and deferred outflows at your end. So if you're looking at it, um, in terms of current assets, which represent assets. That are accessible within one year or less of the summer thirty first date. Um, that's thirty three percent of your total assets and deferred outflows, whereas non-current is sixty six percent, and then deferred outflows are just that one percent. So deferred outflows are primarily related to the net pension obligation. After assets, we will move into the liabilities. My abilities set at a total of twelve point three million at your end, and by far the largest. Uh, category of liabilities is bonds payable and their related accrued interest. That's split up between current and, uh, long term. So overall, that category of liabilities represents seventy six percent of all liabilities. So there's more detail on what what makes up those liabilities later on in the footnotes. Um, it breaks out by. What is owed by funds type or component unit? So we'll see that a little bit later on in this presentation. Um, so as with the assets, um, if you're looking at current liabilities. Uh, overall, current liabilities represent twenty percent of all liabilities at your end, whereas non-current represent eighty percent. From there, I'll go into the net position section so that it, uh, kind of equates to the city's net worth. Uh, it's broken out into three categories. It's net position invested in capital assets, net of related debt that represents sixty two percent of net position at your end. Restricted net position is eight percent, uh, of all net position at your end. And then what's left is unrestricted, and that equates to thirty percent at your end. So total net position at your end, which is your assets less liabilities, is just under eighty seven million for twelve thirty one, twenty twenty one. I'll jump into the statement of activities. This is still full accrual accounting, so this is kind of the same setup that you'd have for private sector industry. Kind of a strange flow for this. So you've got expenses on the far left-hand side for the primary government. You can see that for total primary government expenses total just under twenty five million for the fiscal year. And then if you were to dive deeper into those numbers, you would see that salaries, wages, and fringe benefits total about nine point three million. Or thirty seven percent of all of that, twenty four point nine million. Then for revenues, uh, that's the next three columns that you'll see at the top of the the statement. You've got charges for services, then operating grants and contributions, and capital grants and contributions. So for, uh, charges and services, that's by far the biggest source of revenues for the city. That amounted to nineteen point eight million for the year or seventy one percent of all revenues. Next biggest source of revenues is down towards the bottom. You'll see that that is comprised of property taxes. Which were just under five point six million for the fiscal year, and that represents twenty eight percent of all revenues for the city. Third line from the bottom shows the change in net position, which is your income for the year. And for the primary government, there was an income of just over three point two million for the year. And from there, we'll get into a little bit more of the detail of what goes into those numbers and just look at the general fund. So these numbers are included in what you just saw, but, uh, they were. Combined with all of the other primary governmental funds. So now we're looking at just the general fund, which is modified accrual basis of accounting. So. Here you won't see things like debt or capital assets. It's just, uh, current resources in this presentation. So we touched on earlier, uh, overall, the primary government has a lot of funds sitting in cash and equivalents and investments. So that holds true for the general funds. Uh, and then if you look at the liabilities, uh. Unearned revenue jumps out a little bit because that's a, by far the largest liability in the general fund, sitting at just over four hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. And that is comprised of two, um, types of unearned revenue. One hundred and twenty one thousand of that is for, um, this year, twenty twenty two. Marina fees that were prepaid, uh, to the city, and then the remaining balance of that was three hundred and one thousand of unspent ARPA. Funds for COVID relief. So then after the assets in liabilities is the fund balance, which sits at just over five point five million for twenty twenty one. And to put that number into perspective, that five point five million dollars for the fund balance at your end. Represents just over sixty percent or seven point two five months. Of the actual general fund expenditures for the twenty twenty one fiscal year. So that's just to say that. If you were to not receive any funding after December thirty first of twenty twenty one. Hypothetically, the general fund could survive for seven and a quarter months without receiving any other funds. In twenty twenty two. So we know that that didn't happen to date, but that's just a little bit more perspective behind those numbers. And then for the income statement related to the general funds. It's more of what you saw earlier. The biggest source of, um, revenues for the general fund is taxes. And then there's detail as to what makes up expenditures. So public safety is the biggest category of expenses for the general fund, and then it's recreational and cultural. Expenses after that. Overall, the general fund had a slight loss on the year of sixty five thousand dollars, but again, the. Fund balance overall is very healthy for the city. And from that statement, I will get into the footnotes just briefly here. I'll touch on a few areas. So just we had a few overages for the budget in the general fund. Those are reported here. It came in the public safety, public works, and recreation and cultural, uh, expense categories. You can see the final budget column is the first column, the actual expenditures are the second column, and then the variance overall is the third column. So the summary is coming from detail later on in the statements. If you care to see it, it's towards the back after the footnotes. I mentioned earlier that there's more detail on the long-term debt in the footnotes, so that can be found in note J. Again, this is broken down by funds type. You've got governmental activities, business-type activities, and then component units. And then it's a summary of what happened during the year. So you've got your beginning balances listed by each source, and then any new debt. Less payments equals the ending balance. And I'll point out that, uh, new debt shows up in the business type and. Component unit sections, but what actually happened there is that, uh, the city refunded some debt to get some better interest rates in each of those categories. So. Uh, it looks like it's new debt. It's actually the result of refunded debt. So the city is saving money by restructuring their interest agreements during the year. So there's more detail. For all of that summary on these following pages. So here we have again, within the. Business-type activity section, it lays out the changes for the refunded debt. Uh, and then the same thing when you get into the component unit section. And then on the end of page forty six, you can see principal and interest requirements by fund type through the year twenty thirty seven. So it's all summarized at the bottom of page forty six. And from there, I will jump into the pension reporting briefly. I'll just highlight the fact that, uh, the city has been making great progress on paying down their net pension liability. And I'll draw attention specifically to the planned fiduciary net position as a per- percentage of. Total pension liability. So at twelve thirty one, twenty twenty one.
Yes, Jake, what, what, what page are you on?
That is page fifty nine. And if you're looking at the PDF, it's page sixty out of sixty seven. Yep, so at year end, the city's plan was ninety seven percent funded as compared to eighty eight percent funded in twenty twenty. And eighty four percent funded in twenty nineteen. Uh, that table shows. A history going back to twenty fifteen, and ultimately there will be ten years of history shown here, um, on a prospective basis.
Sometimes you fade out. Can you repeat that last, repeat the last?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you heard of page fifty nine, but I'll kind of just revisit the whole topic. So, uh, I was drawing attention to the planned fiduciary. Position as a percentage of the total pension liability. So at year end, the city was ninety seven percent funded. As compared to eighty eight percent funded in twenty twenty and eighty four percent funded in twenty nineteen. Maybe. I was saying also that, uh, eventually there will be ten years of history shown here as being added prospectively. And the next page shows similar results for the libraries. Plan funding. So the library is at the same percentage level. The library's plan is ninety seven percent funded as well. At the end of twenty twenty one. And then the next page, which is page sixty one, shows a history of contributions. So the first column is what you were, uh, required. To contribute. The next column is the actual contribution, and then the third column shows excess contributions. So each of the last five years, the city has contributed an extra one million dollars to the plan to work on that net pension liability. Which is a huge portion of, um, why the city has been able to get to the ninety seven percent funded mark. So that's everything that I was going to cover for the financial statements, footnotes, and, um. Additional MERS schedules. Does anybody have any questions? It sounds like you may have had issues.
Do you know, who was to speak first?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My phones are curious. We don't know if they're working or not, so I'm checking. I am referencing your audit-related communication letter on page two. You are referencing internal controls. And there, uh, you. Well, let me ask the question. If those are outsourced for reporting, and that is done in compliance with the GAAP. Why is that a deficiency or deleterious if it's not done internally? Thank you.
If, um, I will go ahead and go over the the separate audit-related communication letter, um, if the host could allow me to share my screen now. I will put that up for the. Okay. Okay, so you should see the audit-related communication letter now, um, and the person who asked the question. This letter does start out talking about internal controls, which is the policies and procedures of the city. And on the second page, we mentioned a deficiency. It's called a significant deficiency, which is not a material weakness, meaning that. Errors might not get caught in the normal course of operations. But it's an item that we're required to communicate to those charged with governance. Um, and it's the preparation of the financial statement, which it basically says, as a matter of convenience, the city has hired outside auditors to assist with preparing. The generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP-based financial statements. And that's really that entire seventy-page booklet that Jake just walked through. And so like many smaller entities, the city is hiring us to prepare these financial statements for you, including all of the disclosures. Uh, because we have software that can do that for you, and, um. We basically provide, we put together the statement and provide the drafts to the city, and it is reviewed and approved in draft form. So this finding comes about because we're actually preparing the financial statement and then issuing an opinion on it. And under auditing standards, we have to be independent to issue an opinion. And so this is letting you know that. Essentially, because the city is getting those draft financial statements and reviewing it closely, we are still independent to issue an audit opinion. So under the standards, we're required to inform you that it is considered a deficiency because we are assisting you in preparing it. But because the city is reviewing the draft financial statements, we are still independent to issue an opinion on the financial statements. Um, and this is.
But confirming that you're qualified to do so and that you do so in compliance with GAAP, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Walker, row four.
You're on green. Oh, thank you. Um, so comparing last year's audit or the twenty twenty audit to the twenty twenty one audit. The findings under the budget amendments were the same last year and this year. And you had made recommendations last year that the budget amendments be approved in the future. So are we not doing that? Because you're repeating those same things, and it was public safety. At about ninety five thousand dollars both years, and then rec, uh, parks and rec as well from last year as well. And it was, um, we were told. Or instructed after this that it was overtime wages and benefits that put us over the budget amount both years.
Right, I can answer that because that's not for them. By state law, we're supposed to be doing that.
Okay.
That's when I go through it at the end of the year, try to estimate out what's going to happen between. December to the end of the year with all the different expenses, and that's just me not getting all of the expenses in line before twelve thirty one. Making sure it's under, not raising that budget number like we do at the end of the year. Like, we did one for library. I should have done a better job estimating, rather than doing it for those two funds, or those three accounts within the general fund.
Okay.
And some of those were more for the last building than, uh. The recreation was more the gas and whatever it came in, much more than expected for the. Public safety, they had a kind of issue with some amount of overtime because it really has some injured fruit, an injured person. In the thing covered by that of overtime coverage, which kind of took us over the limit of what we expected. So there's some things that happened, but it just takes better estimation.
Okay, and I think the reason kind of behind my question is that, because when I'm looking at the budget for the fiscal or the calendar year. I'm looking at what percentage public safety takes of the general fund budget. That's really important to me to know that as an elected official. So when I'm doing that, I'm estimating every, it's twenty eight percent, it's thirty two percent, it's thirty six, it's forty two. And that might skew a little bit if we're doing budget amendments at the end of the year. That would take a different. Portion of the pie is what I'm trying to get at. So I'm, I guess I'm just wondering if there's ways to. To do budget amendment, like, based on your recommendations here, like, we recommend budget amendments be approved in the future. Does that mean, like. In anticipation of an amendment that will happen at the end of the year? And I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that we are. Um, following through on the recommendations as you do the audits every year. And like, oh, we, okay, that was on my last year. Did we do that this year? So that was the reason for my question. Thanks.
Mr. Shields, uh, word two, two.
Yes. So I appreciate that we do a full accrual method of accounting. I, my, I guess two questions. One is, is that common among cities? And then two, does this include in the full accrual, I think, uh, include our MERS liabilities?
Yeah, so I can address that. So that is a requirement. Um, both layouts are a requirement for governmental accounting. So. I was just kind of drawing attention to the fact that there's a slight difference between the pages that you were seeing initially to what you're going to see. For the, like I said, like, uh, the general fund page. So the full accrual is more like what you would see like at a nonprofit or a for-profit. And again, that is required for that page to be shown, and then. The modified accrual is also required to be shown. So it's just kind of a governmental reporting thing, so you can see things on a. Uh, a more current basis or modified, and then again, you can see all the liabilities that are long-term, like the MERS liability and your debt. So both were required and are required for all governments.
Change, is that correct? Mr. Terry.
Yes, first can show some. What does the annual actual evaluations, I was going to change this, um, changes, whatever you. They're experiencing the investment market, et cetera, then you can change it. It does change over time, correct?
About to be at ninety seven percent.
That's pretty good, yeah.
Cool.
Start, good job. I know that's your favorite.
Two thousand sixteen.
I know you're different.
Mr. Moore, there's a question.
I don't know if this question's for L or, uh, presenters, but being the newest person at the table, I'm happy to hear of unbalanced is healthy. But is there some recommended standard or percentage in our context that our fund balance should meet? In other words, a certain number of months or a certain percentage?
What I'll tell you is that we should have a certain number of months, and that's from here to here. We figure out, it's going to be five, six, whatever. When you're going to put in more like. Well, we think we got a project coming. We got a grant coming down the road. We got to make sure we've got another quarter million dollars to match. Quarter million dollars we're going to get from the state on something. So then you start building in those things that we're going to have on top of there.
Is it a number of months that's the standard?
There is no standard as far as, I'm not sure. No, you kind of sit your own, uh, desire of what you want to put in there. And just like me, I always like to have it because a large amount, at least six months. Blood helped us tremendously back in our mouth when the market took a bite, because we were laying with people off. And that type of thing, we were able to use our fund balance for a couple of years before things started, the ship started riding. So we didn't have to begin to laying off a number of employees and cutting services, so.
Exactly. Thank you.
Mr. Shields.
Thank you, man. Uh, just to follow up on, um, Mr. Moore's comment there. Uh, Michigan municipal, uh, I guess it's maybe twenty twenty data, but.
Uh, in Michigan, this is maybe twenty twenty data, but the average for Miss Perry's, the fund balance there is sixteen percent. Now, I'm not, I think that's far from ideal. Just kidding. Uh, so sixty percent of, uh, sixteen percent shows we're doing quite well. You look at the average in the state. I have, I have a follow-up question. In the liabilities, or I, I, I saw roads are coming as, kind of as assets, is that, is that correct? And i- if they are, I'm assuming that means they're not, is any deferred maintenance costs included or, uh, added in to the analysis? Do you want me to answer that? And the government.
Couldn't totally hear that.
I don't know why you find it interesting, but so that's what you're looking at here. Um, the trailer goes in as an asset. When we have, what we basically keep the county on, on a daily basis, what we call fund balance. And that's just, that's not gonna show roads as an asset. No, but then, as you look in the back, we don't have that anywhere. But they bring it in just to show you all the different assets and see which one include roads, sidewalks, et cetera. Uh, but there is nothing built in as far as some type of defer or something where you wanna build something up for, uh, replacement of those roads. Once again, that gets into our fund balance within the street system, um, as far as what we keep in mind for future projects that are coming. Which I'm curious a lot of our, our street projects, our fund of also through the right-of-way fund, which is strictly for the right-of-way development, which is street sidewalks, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, appreciate that. Appreciate that. Keep that in the forefront.
Mr. Moore.
Oh, on page, and again, I don't know whether to direct this to Mr. Terry, uh, presenters, but on page thirty-six of the booklet, you identify custodial credit list. And my question is, um, given the amount of assets we're dealing with, what practical alternatives are there to reducing any credit custody of credit?
I don't, that, she, I talked to Tita earlier today, and that's where you get the FDIC, so like according to what I'm hearing since they've happened. So unless you log, you know, sixty bank accounts and put five hundred thousand dollars in each one, it's not gonna happen. Or do some types of things. But what we're just trying to do is just let you know that there's a certain amount of assets that if that banker, that business broker, banker up, you're gonna get so much out through FDIC insurance and, and, uh, that's, that is, that is something that, uh, businesses go back to, et cetera, then just have to deal with.
It's, it's interesting information, but if there's no practical alternative, it's not incredibly useful. That would be my.
That's true. It is, it's more of, um, you know, as Al said, it's just a, a highlight. It's an inherent risk in the accounts. So in practicality for operations, the city is not going to open up bank accounts across the state that only have five hundred thousand dollars and then transfer money every time they do a payroll. So, um, you know, it's just, it's a required disclosure because banks, you know, it's a very remote possibility, but we have seen banks go under in the past, so.
I guess that comment was intended to be respectful.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
And we do, uh, when we can thankfully just settle, it's true, we have our banks, our, our non-funds investing, which is the one thing we need to make sure we do.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagner, thank you, Mayor. Just one question, as in, it's future perspective. I didn't see anything about cybersecurity risk and almost feels like that will come into play at some point in time. That an auditor's done on our books, so there'll also be some audit to make sure we have, you know, some kind of security coverage in place. Is that you?
More than insurance thing, we do have insurance coverage for cybersecurity risk. And that's got, and that's come on more and more and less, whatever, half a dozen years. Uh, we do have coverage insurance-wise for cybersecurity risks, yeah. Not really the financial, but.
Any other questions? Ms. Walker.
Um, Jake, in one, in your presentation, I think it was on page sixteen, you talked about ARK funds, about three hundred thousand dollars. Can you let me know what the line item that would have been folded under?
I didn't catch the part that you were questioning on page sixteen.
Page sixteen. You, you had mentioned our funds of three hundred thousand dollars were in there, but I didn't necessarily see.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't hear you initially, but that was under unearned revenue. So it's included in the four hundred and twenty-two thousand, uh, ninety-one dollar total in the general fund.
So it's four hundred and twenty-two thousand ninety-one dollars?
Yeah, three hundred and three thousand is the arc, and then there was like a hundred and twenty or so that's, uh, that was, uh, the biggest payment was from Marina, which is included with that.
Okay.
And then you should be getting another, the second payment, three hundred and three. I think you're still saying like, like October.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, Council? There's a public attorney question, so they'd like to ask the City Council, the guidance of your presentation. I would be in love. Uh, I would like to say thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, you have no further questions for the city, I take it, or comments?
Uh, I could spend a few moments going through the audit-related communication letter as well, if you'd like me to. It's, I mean, it's a lot of required communications. Um, but I did want to point out specifically a couple items, um, more towards the end of the financial statements. It's new standards coming into play. So this is the audit-related communication letter. Um, and we're talking about these items that we point out to, these are items we're required to communicate to those charged with governance on an annual basis. Um, so this is letting you know that your accounting policies are in no aid to the financial statements. Um, accounting estimates are inherent in the financial statements. And so the biggest estimate in here is that net pension liability. Um, and as someone already mentioned, that's going to change every year. It's a actuarial estimate that is reestimated every single year. So it, um, you know, your funding status can go up or down depending on what that estimate comes out at each year. Um, also, the depreciable lives of your fixed assets is an estimate. You're estimating based on your capitalization policy, how long those assets will last, and it's depreciated over their lives. Um, and then some, you know, significant financial statement disclosures. Um, we do mention the investment risk disclosures, which someone already, um, pointed out. So, um, as well as the pension plan disclosures and commitments and contingencies. Um, as far as audit adjustments, we did not have any audit adjustments. So there were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements we found in the financial statements. And then moving down to the bottom of the letter, this is where we start talking about some new standards that will be effective in future years. So the first item is leases, and this is, uh, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Eighty-Seven, which will require the city to record all of their leases on the face of the financial statements. Um, so right now, we only record, or the city only records leases if it's for an asset that you own at the end of the lease. Um, and this will require all leases greater than a year in length be recorded as a right-to-use asset and then an offsetting lease liability. Um, so the GASB is trying to, um, continue to accumulate those future lease payments in your financial statements so that the reader has a clear picture of what your commitments are on those leases directly on the financial statements. And that will be effective for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And then the next item, the subscription-based technology arrangements, is the same sort of concept except for subscription, um, software items. So if there's any, um, if you're leasing any software on a annual recurring basis or on a multi-year contract, you would also re-record those on the face of your financial statements, just like a lease. Whereas now, the city is just recognizing those payments as they're made, if there are any. Um, and the last item is related to pension plans, which won't have a significant effect. It just clarified when you have to record a pension plan on the face of the financial statements versus just disclosing it in the notes to the financial statements. Um, particularly related to the four fifty-seven plan, the standard does say that you do not have to record that as a, a, a pension trust fund or a pension fund of the city. Um, so those were the three items I just wanted to make sure we talked about. Are there any other questions about anything?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Ability, are we going to be putting in extra funds to? I'm not yet with that at this point.
So are we going to get, uh, annual nurse evaluation, uh, which comes in about May June, or based on that? We'll look at that and decide. We will certainly expect to. And you'll see that ninety-seven is gonna be a much lower number with, uh, as a clinical evaluations.
Okay. And software leasing, do we currently do that?
There might be something, but most of it would be by the, the software program, but anyway. Once we get a little bit of a, it was not by all of that, and we'll find out.
Yeah, we're, we're a good check.
Right, yeah.
Anything else, Council? Questions, comments? Thank you for this presentation. It's interesting that you're not out in front of us, but I think that's just great.
So it's just great to not have all that.
You're always. Hey, thank you very much for your. Really concise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, cause the agenda, and it's the adoption of the policies, or some, they will prove the following. May second, two thousand twenty-two, another session, City Council meeting minutes, as well as acknowledging the receipt of certain administrative transactions that have happened since of May second, two thousand twenty-two, and I take it to Council for possible changes in option, otherwise. No questions? If you want any change or just a simple mention on the last page of the minutes. It says, uh, second, let us get, let us get, there's not a, there's not a number on the page. First one's, the last page of the letter, so Council comments. Okay, simply references Councilman Wagner. Councilmember Wagner recommended, um, Rupert, blah, blah. It did strongly recommended the book. For anybody's future reference, the book is called The Rabbit Effect by Dr. Kelly Harding. I'm not sure it needs to be added, but.
We're sitting in a certain room. What I did get, I want to say it's the book and says the rabbit. Yeah, the next line, is that a comment? I'm gonna say it's the rabbit.
Got it, got it.
It's out there, it's one I had.
Okay, hold on. So the rabbit is in there. Anything else on the, on agenda? Ms. Walker.
Um, it did say in the minutes that, um, in regards to the first page and the hearing the lots at Lumber Square presentation, it did say that at the end of that paragraph, that the Council expressed interest in supporting the project financially along with the letter. And I didn't see that in the agenda, but I'm hoping that that's the reason for the presence of our friends here this evening.
You know, there's a process in place, and normally, it's come to the City Council. Normally, there is an asking of what are they requesting from the city for us to start, to start taking work on this? And that was why when they went away, it's, the ball was in their court. And when they come back to city, to the city manager, they are the planner, and they work through this thing, they'll come back to City Council. So it really isn't.
I mean, letters come, right? As far as that side of it, but the finance part, I'm sure we'll have to imagine something to discuss it. But the letter is supposed to be there as soon as I receive one.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields, I'll make a motion to the agenda. A motion for, uh, resolution. Mr. Shields, a second from Mr. Moore. Is there some other discussion, though?
No, I just thought, I approved, approved that motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure if it was more to it. Uh, discussion, Council, I take it to City Clerk, pass for rule.
Shields?
Yes.
DeMore?
Aye.
Wagner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion passes five zero. This is miscellaneous public comments. This is the opportunity to address City Council, not the audience, but to address City Council with topic issues, something that you wish to bring to them. I asked you to give your full name and your full address, and when you step up to the mic that way, we call. Is there anybody? Just to speak to Council. Come on down.
On development, the resident at two twenty Washington Street. Uh, so as was mentioned, and as we know, we are intending to apply for a real revitalization replacement grant through the MDC. That application is two weeks from this upcoming Friday, so we have three working weeks left on it. We're applying for, um, grants in addition to some other MDC um, alternative sources or supplemental sources, I should say. Um, that if our application is successful, will allow us to build sixteen workforce housing units here in Toshie. And be a seventeen million dollar investment in the Old Town Hamlet neighborhood. As you probably are aware, these, this application is going to be extremely competitive. Um, we're anticipating that the applications are, that the fund is going to be oversubscribed multiple times. It's a hundred million dollar fund. We're anticipating that the MDC will get at least two or three or more times that much in plus. It is based on a scoring system, how they competitively allocate this grant. Um, and we think that, that then the scoring is going to be extremely competitive. So every point will matter for, for our application. I think we mentioned when we were here previously that there is a scoring item for binding commitments from a local financial source, which can be the local unit of government, um, or it can be the county, it can be the city, a local financial support. Um, it does, doesn't specify the amount that the support has to be, but it does have to be bound for the points. When we presented it to the board, instructors, like we mentioned, to, to work with staff on what that, what that, uh, local financial support might look like from the city. Um, and in our previous experiences with, um, scoring items like this that require local financial support, uh, we often turn to utility tap fees and connection charges as a way for the city to provide that contribution. Now, in discussions with staff, we were informed that the city may not have the ability to deviate from the approved rate schedule that was approved by City Council. Um, and I, I would that the total ordinance is for the city. Um, and for the capital charge for utilities, uh, water and sewer, it says, the capital charge shall be paid prior to connection to the city's water system at a rate prescribed by the City Council from time to time by resolution. And that wording, I think, and hope leaves open the possibility that the City Council could, uh, adopt a resolution allowing for a different rate for a specific wooden project. Which of course we have confirmed by, by the city attorney, but I think that would leave open that possibility that the city could adopt uh, a separate rate for a specific project by resolution. We anticipate for our project that these capital charges will be around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars based on our initial estimates of the sizes of the meters that would be needed for water and sewer. Now, that would be something that, that we'll have to confirm as we go through the, in the process, um, of sizing those meters. And we think that, given the strategic nature of this project, the unique opportunity to leverage so many sources, it's a redevelopment-ready site, that all of the, the city master plan, different, different planes recognize the port of providing incentives to redevelopment sites and for workforce housing. You know, this will be owned and managed by a nonprofit. And we think that this is a worthy project that, um, should, should receive some, uh, additional consideration for potentially an alternative, um, amount. We'd like to recommend and ask for a ten percent reduction or up to thirty thousand dollars in that capital charges, of which I estimate will be around three hundred and thirty thousand. estimate will be around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Project. Um, or alternatively that the staff be given authority to to provide that approval after consulting with with people.
You would have to go through a city council for approval for that, am I correct?
Yeah, anything different to what our ordinances are. I do find.
Goes through city council.
But the letters we refer to the resolution of those charges. What I'm referring to is the city ordinance. Section twenty-two sixty-nine, it says there are no free services for water supply or sewer services. Do you know? It's been in place for long before I came here, and we have never given any type of, you know, capital charging, water, water or sewer services, even to the city. Free for anybody. Uh, that's the ordinance I'm talking about, it's a city law, which cannot be. Hurt. I've talked about that with our city attorney, and he always agree with me on that. I mean, it's been a very full government, so. And that's what it is, it's not a resolution for rates and charges that we're talking about, that I'm talking about. It's what the city ordinance says, new free service shall be finished by the water supply and sewer system. Through the city or any other agency, it's mentality, person, firm, corporation, public or private. Who will include the capital charges, so I mean, that's just.
That's the slap, then that's the.
Capital charges.
Capital charges. And you, you're talking about, but you're talking about a ten percent break on water and sewer.
I'm referring to the capital charges. And in my reading, the quote that Mr. Terry's referring to seems to be referring to the ongoing charges, cost of services. So maybe, maybe there's a misunderstanding in my.
That's interpretation, city attorney myself, this is, this is service, you provide service.
Okay.
Water and sewer service on those part of the costs.
Alright, we're we're not asking for the free service, we'll pay all water, sewer, electric rates. We're requesting a reduction in the capital charges at ten percent.
Can also talk, when I first started this, I had a discussion with Ben Leonard, I called him last week and asked him about the application. And I was asking about the, are the financial support items have to be in place prior to the application being submitted? And Ben said, no, they do not, because of the shortness of this period, nobody likes these things in place. The group is also going to the Emma County Brownfield, we're around committee tomorrow to discuss having doing the TIF Brownfield, which will have to be.
That goes super.
This goes through the city of Toshie, through the city council for approval. That would be the city councils or the city of Matansky's contribution, and then say of our support, because contributions are what I'm really, just basically legal. Um, the cities to give money to people. Uh, but that would need a new support, we said we would have the time period from the application to where we will actually get a lot of slack to talk about the financials, which he was saying, which generally honestly in the fall we would get that in place, that's what these, you know, applicants are supposed to be doing, that's what I was told by Ben. I talked to Sarah, I mentioned that to her, and see if her group and talked to Ben confirmed that there's not a real rush to get everything in place, and we can look at all this stuff, and if it's a TIF, maybe by the time it goes through that process and and if the council approves a TIF, got a TIF, every time forward, they will forward it.
Hmm. Mr. Moore?
So my question is for Cory, hi Cory. Um, relative to scoring purposes. Do they uh prioritize certain types of contributions? In terms of funding commitments, or is it just a funding commitment?
It's just a local financial source.
Okay.
And and this is, this is maybe where some of the. I guess disconnect is, is the scoring, the wording of the scoring refers to a binding local financial source for the points? And it says that it's not necessary to have it be binding to including your application. By this force or per underwriting, but at least the wording of the question. And I would have to confirm this with M D C, we're not technically supposed to talk to Dan about it now that the application is open, if we go through the M D C, the main office. Uh, but the wording of of the section in the application is that it has to be binding.
So it doesn't say how much, correct? All it has to say is, and I I think he said, get a lot to him.
That's different, they actually provide support besides the value.
Right.
Besides the financial support.
If it goes to 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 Mr. Terry, and we'll go with it.
But but as a point of clarification, there's nothing that would prioritize, for example, a decrease in capital charges versus some other kind of
No.
Contribution.
And it doesn't specify a dollar amount, doesn't need to be a percentage or anything, it just needs to have local financial support.
Well, Brownfield would be that could, that support, because Brownfield actually goes through city council here versus.
Yes, my, just my concern is that I want to put together the most competitive application that I can, and I'm not sure whether the M D C would consider that binding or not far along with this.
Well, but you can come back to that, this, that is going to be a part of the measuring scales for points at this point, is that correct?
Well, that's the conversation again, whether or not that's.
Please, this one.
Senator, uh, possibly the first branch area community foundation, six one six to the Paski Street. Uh, I think one of the the pieces we were talking about, this scoring mechanism, I think with what Dan may hold, uh, Mr. Terry um, is there's a range of score of points that you can receive on that section, um, from zero to four points. Um, if you have a binding commitment from a local, um, government for financial support, you get the maximum number of points. If you are working with them through, like, continuing to work on the Brownfield tip or other sources of financial support, you may get two points, and if you have nothing, then you get zero points. So in Cory's, um, looking at how he can put together the most financially or the most, um, competitive, uh, application, we're seeking to get those four points, because as he started with his, um, uh, presentation to you all, we anticipate that every point will count, so the difference between four points and two points doesn't seem like a lot on the face of the application, but could actually ultimately be the difference between uh, getting to the next round or getting secured, uh, funding or not, so we got.
So you're saying that we give you an amount, then you'll get four points, if we don't give you an amount, you're going to get two points?
Uh, if we had something that's binding, whether it be, uh, if you know, that could be a resolution of some sort, uh, to Cory's ask of up to a certain amount, um, but if it's, uh, we're continuing to work, we made a presentation to the Brownfield and we're continuing to work on that, that is not binding at that point, so then we would, as we read the application, we would get two points. I'm not an expert on application, Cory has done a lot more of these applications, but that's my understanding. I just thought that that clarification of the point range on that might be helpful for your consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Terry?
I disagree with that, I just like the time, it was too short to get the funding. And when our city ordinance allowed, we do, I was on the lawyers to do about uh, free capital charges.
Hmm.
And I think the TIF method is probably the route to go, and I think you'll find that most of the applicants, especially when you're talking a large dollar project. It just seemed to be indicated from Ben that that's where they're going. And those other agencies are in the same boat, they're not going to love it either.
They're like. Mr. Shields?
Mayor. Uh, as I I brought up, uh, Mrs. Ford's point on the last meeting, that when I looked at this RAP grant and the scoring criteria, and it is that I was reading the same thing, two points versus four points based on the binding. And I I think it'd be amazing if this project falls apart, or or because it doesn't receive the RAP grant, because potentially we're just just short, so I I, you know, I urge us to do, as I was saying in last, the last council meeting, that we still look at them all we can to be supportive of this project. And I feel, I'm just kind of disappointed, I feel like there's some resistance to that, but I, and I I hear there's a, uh, some valid points for that resistance, but I feel like we were asking the last council meeting was to have a discussion, potentially have this idea in a agenda meeting. I I hear that there was a discussion with with the ops team and city staff. And and then it was, you know, the the what council was asking last week to potentially discuss this a tap fee reduction, um, was was this this decided at city staff level to 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 mix it? Without that, to first, uh, city council to discuss it, so that's my disappointment. Um, wouldn't we, as a council, uh, would we go with that? I don't know, I don't think we're given the opportunity to do that. You know, the opinion from our city attorney, the city attorney is not here to discuss and hear the, uh, the discussion as mean to hear the other points of 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 the this, of this, of the matter, I I I'm wondering, so my question is, I would ask the city attorney who is here, would be, is this, uh, uh, ordinance that says free, can you wait free, when we're talking about reduction, we're not talking about free, we're talking about one time.
Reduction is is giving a certain percentage free.
And and I would have that discussion with the city attorney, and I would also then, if it was on the agenda, make it up to the local homework and 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 point out other examples of other municipality that he restored last week, brought up, City Grand Haven, who was, who did this, I I imagine there are.
Since that state that you can't do that, though.
Well, that that is, there's a, there's a question again that I can, we flesh out in this.
If you want to go through the process of changing the ordinance, we could do that, and it's going to be a process.
And it may not be a deal breaker, I I.
But but time.
I understand that.
We didn't create the timeline of need of a timeline for application. We did not create that. Maybe you should contact the people doing the grant and tell them they need to give more time for these people to get their ducks in order.
And who's going to tell the state?
Well. It's obviously that we.
It's the right thing, and the emergency room is not even a shit out of park.
It sucks. I want this to go through.
Right.
I listened to our city attorney, I listened to our city manager, who says that isn't the way that we can go about this.
And we're just saying that now.
You know, we ran the grant, but. It was just brought up at the last meeting.
Why is that?
So I would, and I knew that we'd never done that, but I wanted to go back and check the ordinance. I'm not sure what I should expect, and the city attorney says agrees with, we've not done this, uh, we we have a law that says we don't do this, so I don't know how you just ignore the law.
But I, I, we have offered other things, and that's, there are other sources of funding that we can work on supporting, is that right?
Well, I did mention the TIF.
The TIF.
So.
Mrs. Walker?
Oh, I'm sorry, Derek, are you finished? Okay, I have this.
Uh, I appreciate bringing up the discussing the TIF option, and and that I guess seems promising, so I I appreciate that, and I I express, I'm I'm expressing my disappointment in this process, I feel like it could have been done differently. But I hope the letter that describes the city's potential support for the the TIF project is shows that the city is highly motivated, uh, to assist, and you know, we know as far as we can vote being binding in that way, so, uh, thank you for your time.
Mayor, we will do work with them with the TIF, I believe, you know, I'm sure you all want to work with them on the TIF. So that's an option, you can't talk members on that and tell you no, like, what are we dealing with as far as what's the size of the project is, uh.
That's what they, but that's where the, where we said the Brownfield.
That's, that's, that's when we start looking at. And it's going to come through to us ultimately to make the commitment, if this is for County Brownfield, they can say yes or no.
There and come back here.
Yeah, but it's it's here, Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor, um, thanks for saying it, Derek, I appreciate it. Um, so I also, I I I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we also have three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of A R P A funds, and that we'll be getting another disbursement of that, and it has not been discussed in any capacity how the city will choose to spend that money. So that is also part of a discussion, and all of these things are evolving, and it's it, it's lots of conversations and back and forth, and they take time. But the ability to act with agility with the state of Michigan and M E D C on this RAP grant or on future rural development grants with, um, Gary McDowell and and Sarah Lucas, now the designated um, appointed by the governor to the rural development, I I am, um, hopeful that, and I realize how difficult it is to apply to grants of the state of Michigan, and the turnover time is really quickly, and that, once again, that's so like to wait. And some communities are in a position to be able to fill up those grants and already have the support right there, and that's probably why they get the grant in addition to fulfilling certain things like walkability, um, equity, density, um, underserved communities. So there's all these rankings that that kind of automatically put rural communities like ourselves at a disadvantage to that application process, so I'm very sensitive to that as a person that works in the government, and has to apply for these grants as well about the turnover time and the agility to be able to act quickly, so.
Well, I've worked very hard on the sidewalk stuff, as you know, from for the last fifteen years, from when I was on the planning commission, I felt that that was a need for walkability in the city and continue to support it, and brought up actually the road, road, uh, mileage back where it was passed nineteen eighty-nine. Eighty-eight, uh, I think, you know. There's a process. Mr. Moore?
I just wanted to say that, to my mind, this word binding is a pivot point and key, and if there's a way to get more clear definition of what is meant by binding, that that would be really helpful. So that is just a suggestion.
Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to follow up my last comments and and add this, you know, this is all in due respect, I, I just know it's personal traffic with the city staff here. I knew the thing's important to set my expectations clear here, that I was, I was hoping for a different opportunity to potentially discuss different meetings and interpretations of that ordinance. And so that that is, that was intended my comments, thank you.
I didn't know about the settlement situation, Tom, tonight, I don't think, and you did, because he just had the conversation with the city attorney, Mr. Wagner. But that, I don't know, I don't know if anybody might remember the the value of the pilot that we approved, was it like a dollar amount, that was worth? If it could have been a.
Well, I mean, you started with what they gained, but we got a lot. I mean, because you're going to get like maybe twenty-four thousand a year in taxes or something. Um, but if you were to take whatever that was in seventeen eighty-nine.
Absolutely.
Yeah, usually, you know, that is, uh, two, maybe two hundred and some thousand in taxes every year.
But if I make a lot of that kind of number, or whatever that value is, is there, you know, TIF, whatever, is there any way that we could commit to something that, you know, we're we're someone that's in this project going through, we as a city are are committing, you know.
I think within the letter, they could mention that the city has encouraged the TIF etcetera, but.
And was open.
What what is the statement except as it is binding?
You could also, they could also put in that the city had supported, uh.
The previous project, the third pilot.
On that same site for the same situation, for the amount of roughly thirty-three thousand dollars, was it?
As far as what the, it was estimated, I can make sure.
Estimated amount of. Estimated amount of over thirty thousand dollars towards this project on a yearly basis, you know, so I'm reading that grant, if I was reading the grant, I would say, jeez, same project, same place, city said they already made a commitment, and they're now saying they will make a commitment again to this. I I can't believe that they're going to say that we're going to give less or or not do that.
I just want to say that I think that, um, it's very evident that the, there's support from the council, um, in seeing something, uh, be built on this property, and I I just want to say that I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work that you all are putting into it. I appreciate, uh, staff's willingness to to have this discussion with us, and was very flexible and meeting with us in between the two council meetings, so I just want to acknowledge that, that there was, there has been uh, open and easy communication with staff, um, of course, we're here, you know, interpreting things differently in terms of, um, the ordinances that are are before, are before us, but, um, it's clear to me that the city does, uh, value this project and wants to to do what you can, um. Uh, unfortunately, I think we'd all feel the strain of the limitations that we're under, I know we feel the pressure of the timeline of the state went forth and the, um, effort that we're trying to put into make sure that this project can go forward, it's been, you know, kind of uphill battle since since the start, since the community foundation got involved with it, um, but, you know, I do want to acknowledge that we hear that there is support and we will, you know, continue to work with staff and continue to work with council to try and. Outline that as clearly. outline that as clearly as we can for our application going forward.
You say that there was a disagreement on that. Who was your lawyer that said that our lawyer was was not correct in interpretation?
I did not really know lawyer's interpretation.
Do you have a lawyer?
I do not.
Just just, do you have a lawyer that gave you the interpretation that our thing, our interpretation is wrong?
And I wasn't saying that your interpretation is wrong. I don't have a lawyer. I was, we didn't know about the lawyer's opinion either.
Okay.
Based on face reading of the ordinance.
Oh.
Thought that.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a, no, you didn't have a legal stand on this. It was just a opinion of your personal opinion.
Yeah, it didn't, we didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Something that we were interested in.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Moore.
I know I'm repeating myself, but if the standard is binding, we need to know what binding means because that's you have to drive your letter toward whatever they define as binding. That's my perspective. So that's really, really important. I'm not in your world, so I don't know where or how we can reach that, but that's key.
It really is.
It's probably also difficult to find out from the state.
That's my comment.
Mr. Shields. Thank you, Mayor. I I sat in and watched the uh, uh, frequently asked questions, the webinar from the state giving the uh, presentation on the RAP grant and the, and then they answered people's questions. I read through the, I think there was over a hundred different questions and answers. I read through them all and the state is very good at not answering a question. So that's why she was asked to clarify and it's still being the same way we were of as binding.
I I would ask that you contact uh, our state representative for this area that would be involved with that. Which I've John Demos, I've been at three meetings with him this last week. Uh, uh, Demo, Shields, uh, uh, Schmidt or Demos, contact him and 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 put them on this that you want an interpretation. Uh, I seem to get answers when I call those people. But I can't believe that you wouldn't have somebody that would go to that for you on this as well.
We can call Dan Leonard. We can call Dan Leonard, just call the city council.
Well, and I and I'm not sure how much Dan goes pulling into it because the city might explain by somebody else, but I think Dan get educated. They don't want everything to go downstate. They're looking to bring some of it up here. And I think there's a very opportunity to build it and up here. They don't just mean Travis City. They're like someplace other than Travis City as well. From Potaski has a real good shot. They're giving some of the fun in the community foundation.
I would call it to be a letter tomorrow morning. Would that be good?
I I think so. I mean, if it's worth asking him if it's an MEDC grant, I would think that he would know. He can give you a better, a very concrete and tangible answer to what binding is. Is it rapid dairy? Dairy's very binding.
Mr. Wagner. To clarify Tina's point, the fact that it's not defined, so it can be. Fine, I think what I was hearing, you're suggesting if the letter is written properly and we define binding for them, then it's binding because they don't have a strict definition. I would need a statement that we have already supported this with over thirty thousand some dollars towards the last project that was in the same location. And the city council is very, very interested and very supportive of this project going through.
The city had a binding agreement with the previous developer for a pilot program, the pilot saved two hundred one million.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the city is also for positive, looking at additional binding agreements, which is a different amount because of a different type of project it is.
We all want this. I mean, there isn't a single person up here that wouldn't junk a joy at this and want to be at the Uripin kind of. Have some homework to do, obviously. Everybody does. Mr. Moore.
Well, Derek just said too that there's an FAQ that attempts to define that. So I I would certainly look at that just to see what that what that's.
Is that from the webinar?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Is that, there's not that same FAQ on the um, just the application itself, or that's from the webinar recording that you saw those questions that were submitted to the webinar?
Well, the webinar, the the FAQ followed up with the questions that were submitted in that webinar. So everything that's in the FAQ was also in the webinar.
May I have another question?
Yes, Miss Walker.
Thank you. Um, what is, what is the the intention to talk with the county in terms of leveraging another binding um, assistance from another municipality or county government in this context?
Corey mentioned the ground field tip, which starts as the county development authority. That is the advocate that we are exploring um, in terms of contribution, which I understand comes back to city because you're the taxing entity in that case. Um, I'm not an expert on ground field tip, but that's my little bit of knowledge about how it works. So.
That's it.
Um, because I don't know that there are necessarily other things which is county government, for example, would have jurisdiction over within the city that um, you know, like fees and charges and anything like that, other than small.
Well, but I would just refer to the survey that the county did that I'm sure all of us participated in or most of us um, filled out the survey and housing did rise to the top of that survey, what they're gonna actually do about housing or how they would do um, distribute ARPA funds, but it's six million dollars. So obviously they're leveraging a lot more money and I don't know anybody that's come up with any shovel ready projects to present to the county. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
But next is city manager updates.
Uh, public safety had the. The nation assessment last week, which was two, two days long, uh, with with all the different people that are here, they went through all the different policies and all of it. Um, and they did get a very favorable um, embarrassment from the group that was here. Um, so I think that there was they will eventually get this all approved and accredited, the hundred and some policies that all have to have in place and all the different things they're doing to make it all work. But the the credit is, now they get reviewed, now they're open. This all happens, but it might be a couple of months coming, but they they said it was basically spotless. I thought it was, they were very impressed with thirty minutes. So, uh, congratulations to the Department of Public Safety, not only those different people in that in that group have done to get this, bring this thing together. It's been a couple of years, a number of years of getting all that stuff in order. Uh, so I need to mention, I guess, the city council, uh, we did uh, find the state laws passed in twenty eighteen that prohibit municipalities from regulating specific business types that aren't so something really like uh, regulating fortune telling as a specific business, uh, requirements will not be allowed under the new if we allow it, something in place, everyone says you just can't do it period. We could probably amend things and do whatever, but since there's not been a place and nothing will be done. So that's kind of come to a quick halt. Over the last four, five months, we consider talking about uh, numbers off, I wrote so we could just forget that one. I think I'm about seven, taking your answer, questions in my head.
Any questions, council, Mr. Wagner, I'm in coordination now. How long is that? Uh, about safety? How often is that?
Every three years. So I'm looking at constantly be getting after, now have to do all different kinds of reports as things happen, whatever you guys get submitted, to make sure they're actually doing all the policies and performing the things that are in place. So you're constantly doing uh, review, but then it's true, it's a turn of the information process.
Mr. Shields.
And I saw, driven by uh, five, fifteen fifteen Atkins Street, I saw some city staff out there. I seen a truck, someone walking around. That's, it's just outside of some limits. Though with Foster Farm, where I believe some of context of that, I don't know the story, going in there. Is that uh, I wonder if, if city staff is set, is there some water in the city, actions?
There is water out there. It's real water, it runs all the way to Atkins and it goes all the way out of the school. Like uh, the bigger extension runs up there, that is all part of the circular system, a little one, but that's was put in place. Actually, it's not kind of a bigger, but it goes all the way out and goes up and down.
So that, so they.
They're doing city water.
So they'd be accustomed to that, through the government.
So they might be setting movies and doing something, I wonder. I was wondering what was going on.
And electrical as well.
Well, that'd be definitely city electric too. You can even source, I mean, we have a lot of trash and doing the lot. Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Mr. Robert, what's uh, any comments to city council again, the city manager's updates?
Now, going to new business, new adoption of the false resolution, I'm going to establish property tax million rates for two thousand twenty-two. And that would authorize appropriations and property tax revenues for various city funds as previously have been approved as a part of the city's two thousand twenty-two annual budget. Let me add it to it over to city manager, Terry.
Uh, twenty twenty-two taxi value has been established now. It's five hundred and seventy-five thirty-nine, which is a seven point three nine percent increase over the previous year, which was, which looks out really well for us. Um, but that's more than what the um, state's inflation factor is, or the inflation index they call it. Um, so our major rates will get very bad slowly, so we don't really take full advantage of what that increases. Uh, so you can see that the numbers updated based on the major rate, it's slightly less than what they were well, last year, but it'll still bring us in as a net win, it'll still bring us in slightly more than what the budget was. So as far as the budget goes, we'll be fine. And that's pretty much it. If there's any questions.
Miss Walker.
Um, Al, can you explain to me how how all of this gets flushed out? Is this what happens with the with the um, with this assessor? Is this like his work or a combination of finance and the assessor together?
Number of people's work, correct. Yeah, he does the assessing. We'll do the assessing. The assessing is based on the values of twelve thirty-one of last year. And he'll bring that for, he'll bring that for us into the March board review. Uh, where he'll actually send out, you probably, you probably already see an assessment increase notes. A lot of his sales or what he does with his assessing, he'll get sales data from the county as well. It says, this is the, this is where the range, the city of Potaski, based on county sales studies that they run, uh, should be going up or down. But obviously it's going up. Uh, so then here, within a different, within a different district areas of the city, certain properties may grow up more or less based on what's happening in the property in those those districts. So so he goes through all this allocation process and sets the new major rates, you go through, they're the review. Uh, and so there might be changes there based on what residents or old properties make coming, what, some kind of changes to it. Um, and then that also goes back into the county. So you also get the county, where she reviews all his numbers and sees that they agree with what the increases will be. And you also have the state that even reviews this, the county portion, so as far as state evaluation values, uh, to make sure they agree with the numbers. And we come up with the final textbook value numbers.
Thank you. Cause I, and the reason I ask that question is because obviously like the work that that happens in March with the board of review is like an accumulation or aggregation of all this information and then then the report is presented to to the city manager and then comes the city council. And because all of us are new, or the four of us here are new, I've never met this city assessor before and we've never had a presentation by him. So I don't want to pretty any of, anybody else or there's any interest. But I sure would like to meet that person and just get a general sense about maybe some kind of public presentation that summarizes the work that the assessor does and presenting maybe some of this information or something of that nature. So I.
Since we hired him, I think that is a problem.
I wondered if this was coming, that I had a fancy thought, did you mention this before? I thought we offered, mentioned this later this time of year, and I think this is all happening to have him come before the council.
Derek, that's something that actually, it's such a learning curve for, I mean, I just speak for myself, like humbly, like I am learning a tremendous amount about how these things work, but it would be wonderful to put a face in a name and just hear that person present.
We will. We will. We will.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get a, I'll get a, I'll get a max two, three meetings. Okay. But when that, when the three meetings, he will be here.
Okay.
All right, on the agenda. Mr. Wagner, a quick comment, then I'll motion to approve it. Quick comment, I feel like I know that I moved here, I needed his help with some taxing. And when I call the city now, it comes up as a rather angle, but it has never been, it's just the city phone, in in my phone box.
Oh, okay.
I'd like motion to approve the uh, solution to by property tax mortgage rates for twenty-two.
Most of, and a second from Mrs. Moore, the other discussion council. This public, Mr. Ray, and I said, also city council. The city, uh, for the.
Adrian.
Yes.
Mr. Moore, I'm Shields.
Yes.
Walker, I'm Murphy.
Yes. Most impressive is five zero. Comment, we'll start with Miss Walker, what?
First, thank you, Mayor. I do have comments.
Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Wagner, let's go first. Uh, in the last week, watching the the city and all kinds of service organizations and human beings step up to help you with tomatoes that were shut down by sewage in their basement has been um, humbling and uh, I remember media. And um, so that's fantastic. Um, and then secondly, uh, Mayor and I didn't see much of each other, but there was a three hundred person NLEA uh, event this past week and we're both there from across the room. And I thought it was just really well done. I'm thrilled that our county is back in. Uh, Northern Lakes Economic Alliance, I thank Mike Commissioner personally. And um, one of their focus areas is called the blue, blue economy or the blue water economy. Uh, the opportunities by focusing on that thing that is so unique to Michigan are really promising for our city and the region and even the state. And it's um, like an example, they said, you know, what if, what if a Potaski were the electric vehicle watercraft capital? Then we had charging stations down there and they pointed out that segment that is growing faster, projected to grow way faster than what you're parts. So just an awful lot of really neat things at the conference was.
Mr. Shields. Uh, I've been digesting this financial audit and and I if you find it interesting and generating a lot of questions for me, so that's, that's tells you who I am, but um, I I appreciate the citizens, uh, I feel very transparent and and focused on accuracy. And and also shows that we are, we are healthy and thanks to our work as city staff. So um, I'm just thankful for uh, the opportunity that we had for this presentation and I and I also look forward to raising more questions as I dig into it.
Miss Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a very busy week ahead of us here in city council and with our uh, commissions. Tomorrow there is a downtown management board and city council meeting here in this chamber to discuss the juggling lot and potential.
Six o'clock.
The bell at six P M. Yes, change of time. Be here, Lindsay Walker, six P M. Um, and then on Thursday, the planning commission meeting is holding their public hearing. And they're also discussing on the agenda, public engagement. And so part of my ideas about public engagement are turning out as many people as I can to that meeting on Thursday to give feedback on the four rules and regulations that will hopefully um, remove some of the barriers to more um, housing development and infill development in our, in our city. So an opportunity for residents and um, businesses alike and Mr. David Towski to comment on those proposed changes and and moving forward with some really exciting things. So, yeah, I'm excited about all these meetings this weekend and look forward to seeing active engagement, civic engagement of our residents in those processes. So, thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Um, this week I received some concerns once again regarding speeding on Michigan Street between Cameron Zoo and Lockwood in Ward One. Um, I see that the residents are again employing their little green men persons plastic to slow traffic. So I am inquiring about the status of the follow-up monitoring with alter, that alternative device as suggested by Chief Reed and no pressure, I didn't present this to Al ahead of time, so I don't know if you know the status.
Well, they've done it first. They did, they've done like a couple of tests. They wanted to do some early on, but they're gonna come back this Sunday to do additional ones to find out what's happening at that time. I can tell you the first ones were showing the average speed was twenty-six, twenty-seven miles an hour. They do not, I mean, that's what this one currently was, it's twenty-six, twenty. They do not, I mean, that's what this one currently was, is twenty six, twenty seven miles an hour, so.
Was that with the alternative device?
Correct.
Measuring device?
Correct.
Okay, well, there may be incoming because I know there are folks that are still really concerned, so there is.
The West Street is the sound of the.
Michigan, on Michigan, um between Kellman Zoo and Lockwood. And then I also received.
Kellman Zoo and Lockwood, that's only a one block.
Yeah, it's a big old block.
It's also the newer block. So, and then also, sorry guys, this is not, this is the concern section of the presentation. Um regarding, I also received concerns for in Ward one regarding the need for reinforcement of unlicensed use of homes regarding temporary rentals. Here being used and an inquiry about the status of enforcement officer efforts, which I know you guys approved. Before that position, before I was on um the city council, so just once again. Putting that on the radar.
What I'll be on there.
We're not really starting much at any of that, I mean. With the city planner leaving, with the city manager leaving, there's a two hundred millimeter program. Uh spending a busy night, so by the time you have the new city planner and he's. Developing what was going on here, what should happen in the future. Um I don't see a reason I'll be starting this year. There was a program also, we were looking to go from like May June to August or September, kind of a summer thing. So maybe it could be more the summer, some part of not the winter time. So maybe by the time those. Two positions, we're gonna get things up and rolling this year, we're pretty much passed, so I mean, it's gonna be a twenty twenty three item.
And then finally, just a question regarding the status of the legal opinion regarding planning commission review of projects such as the one currently underway on Lake.
Well, I didn't go to council, I didn't go to council this week.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've had the opportunity attending several things this week. One was uh. For Change, it's called, the organization that came here with Galloway. Uh.
Center for Change.
Center for Change, I met with uh, I was up there for six hours, I think at the, in the, the zoo.
Mm-hmm.
Uh Demore was there.
Yeah.
Demore was there. Start your own return. Demore was there, I spent some time talking with him, tried to see where we can get more support for our city. Uh so as you say, I ran into you for a second. I think that was greatly presented, uh greatly attended and a lot of good information. Also having interviewed two people for boards that we had requested uh interviews, put applications in. Uh dealt with some of you with. Well, also looking at uh possible expanding to city having a pri- a public arts commission board. I think it's time for us to move forward. I met with Zach on there and as well as other things for a couple of hours. Zach sent me a great notification of stuff. Uh one was uh University of Kentucky has a thirty seven page. Uh I would set up the public arts commission for a small town or a community. So I I will be bringing, with Kendall who was on board, we'll be working with Crooked Tree, etc. We'll try to get something going and coming back to you on there. Um I guess that's about all. Uh all I ask is that you all drive safe, slow down. I do know, I agree with you, people are driving fast in town. I do see where the police officers are on Jennings Street yesterday and today. Waiting to stop cars at the top and also at the bottom. So I did see they are out there trying to. Last two people. Sometimes I'm wondering if a perception of a car going by in front of your face. Is faster than if you were a little ways away and you saw it at a longer distance driving. And you know, um I found it surprising that we had, had literally this twenty seven miles an hour average in that area, but. How would you that was you?
So that should do.
Yeah.
On the street, somebody's driving faster than they should.
Yeah.
So we put a stop sign on every single street corner. I mean, that's where we'll come to. If you want to stop, right? We're not letting you stop, but we know, the people say, then that just means I start running stop signs, cause people run white stop all the time. I mean, so it's a whole. Process, I guess.
Uh let's continue to work together. We worked through the uh fortune telling stuff. We got through that. We'll get through working with you guys positively. We are all good. It'll go. Not for the business, come for this council, I call this meeting a journey.